On behalf of the town of Silver City, I'm calling this meeting of the Town Council to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, to be a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Councillor Snyder will be joining us by telephone tonight. We'd like to acknowledge that we have our city administration here, we have our fire chief, our police department, and code enforcement officers here with us, both of them. Welcome to the community members and welcome to the press. Thank you all for being here tonight. Agenda item two is changes to the agenda. Does anyone have any changes? Number three is ceremonies, and there are none. Number four is proclamations, and there are none. Number five is council comments. First on the list tonight is Councillor Ben Como.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that I attended a meeting with the city manager and assistant manager, James Marshall, to sit in on the project, the recreation center that's being built. They went over the specifics of timelines of things that we're going to do. I think last Thursday, we're going to have a large concrete pour. So that was really interesting. After Alex and James left, I remained in the building and I spoke with, I believe it was the project manager and the architect, and I was really blown away at how young these men were. These guys must have been in their mid twenties, early thirties, and if anybody's interested in a trade in construction, I would highly recommend looking in the field. I bet without a doubt, these guys make a lot of money. So I think if anybody's looking for a job, that'd be a career to pursue. Another thing I wanted to mention is tomorrow, they're having a meeting at the conference center. The Department of Transportation is going to be discussing the highway project on US 180. There's going to be a lighting project that's going to be going on to improve lighting. So if anybody's interested, that meeting is tomorrow at the conference center from six to eight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Ben Como. Councillor Conno.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everyone who had a part in last week's work session, from those who attended, to Mr. Sadio, who did all the work for it. Thank you, I appreciate everything you did for it. And also Romeo Cruz and his staff from the convention center, who set everything up and made sure that it was a comfortable place for us to meet. I think that work session went pretty well. I think we had some good inputs and there was some good communication between the councillors. So hopefully, there can be some work done in the next few months to make things better downtown. It's a continuous process, it's not going to be something that happens overnight, so hopefully, the public will have some patience with us. This past week, I attended the Advanced Mali training in Albuquerque. Mali is Municipal Officials' Leadership Institute. I am a graduate of Mali, but I like to go every year for continuing education. And I learned a lot of things that I think are actually pretty important to share, not just as a council, but actually with the public too. One of the things that apparently is a problem all over the state, and I believe has been a problem in the past in this community, is elected officials staying in their lanes. And I know some people will think that I'm horrible for saying this, but we all need to do that. By staying in their lanes, one of the quotes from that training was that elected official's role is to make policy decisions, not operational ones. I think that's been something that's come up at least more than once in the past couple of months. Our job is to make the laws, our police officers, our town manager, it's their job to enforce them and to make sure that things are being done on a day-to-day basis. And I think a lot of times, the public also doesn't understand that that is not our job. So I'm going to repeat it yet again, and maybe somebody will understand that we don't get involved in day-to-day things, we're not supposed to. We shouldn't be attacking departments, we shouldn't be saying things about our employees in meetings. All of that is Mr. Brown's job, not ours. If we have a concern, we can bring it to him and then he will look into it if it needs to be looked into, but we need to stop trying to do his job. I've been guilty of it in the past, I know other councillors have been guilty of it in the past. I've never attacked an actual department in a meeting, and I would never ever do that, but I think it's something that needs to stop. And to that point, in the next couple of meetings, I will be sponsoring legislation to have a code of conduct for this council. It makes me sad that we're to that point, but I think we are. So hopefully, we can have a good discussion about that and pass something so that we can all treat our employees with a little more respect than we have been in the past. The other thing I learned at that training, and that is very important, we talked about extensions. We talked about those for about an hour at that workshop. And what we learned was that the only time you should be abstaining when you're voting is if you have an actual conflict of interest. If you have that conflict of interest, you need to name that conflict of interest before the discussion, and then you need to leave the room and not be a part of that discussion. So I feel like that's something that we need to start including in our rules of conduct for the meeting. So if someone has a desire to abstain for something, they need to state what that conflict is and leave the room during that discussion. That's per the municipal league, that's not per councillor Conno. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to update everyone on the environmentally beneficial pilot project of composting sludge at the wastewater treatment plant. Jamie Thompson and Chris Lemmy of Silver City Recycles have been working very hard to make the project happen with collaboration of town staff, Robert Escala, Manny Roscoe, and treatment plant employees. They have visited Carlsbad, New Mexico, where they're currently composting sludge to a beneficial product. From this visit, they received valuable pointers on how to make the pilot project compost pile be successful. They also verified that the New Mexico Environmental Department of the best practice to protect groundwater, the solution was to install an impermeable membrane below the compost pile, and this was done so the process satisfies groundwater regulations. The sludge was mixed with biochar and perchard conch shells to promote composting. The sludge compost pile has exceeded 150 degrees Fahrenheit. At this temperature, 99% of the pathogens have been killed. The compost will be tested for coliforms to confirm it's safe and free of pathogens. At this point, the sludge is Class A compost. The advantages of Class A sludge are, the sludge will no longer be taken to the landfill, saving on landfill space, landfill employees will no longer be exposed to hazardous waste, and an excellent soil amendment is formed. Once the pile's been turned and aged, it can be used as fertilizer. The town needs to compost as much of the sludge at the treatment plant that it can. And again, I'd like to thank Manny Roscoe and the town employees at the treatment plant for their help in making this pilot project happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Snyder. Councillor Prince.
Thank you, Mayor Latner. I recently just attended the State's Interstate Stream Commission meeting, and I just wanted to make sure then for the public, we've got a quite a bit of money that is moving right now to be able to help to stabilize and ensure water access for our south and for our surrounding area. The Interstate Stream Commission is getting organized with information and surveys over at mainstreamnm.org, it's mainstreamnewmexico.org. I would highly recommend most of us to take a look and just be able to see what's happening for our 50, 100-year multi-generation plans right now for good low-surface water and aquifer resources. Beyond that, then, I also want to thank councillor Conno for being able to get the work session together last Tuesday. It was wonderful to be able to see so much engagement and for so many folks to want to have a discussion about the challenges that are being seen in our community. Oftentimes, when it comes to public discourse, the adage has come up multiple times, you know, we are going to be complimentary in public, and then we're going to be critical in private. And it's been such a challenge to be able to see the conflicts that folks have been having to experience in our community, and in some of the few times that any of the public voices get a chance to be heard is at our public meetings here. I'm always available for communication via email, phone calls, and I just want to be able to make sure that we are being critical of the departments that we do have underneath our authority, underneath Mr. Brown's authority, so that we can then get to a better transparent and communicative government for being able to communicate those challenges out. Hope nobody's taking that too personally, but this is the type of due diligence I do believe is required of our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I have is, I want to thank all of those community members who participated in the anti-litter program this past Saturday. We had a good turnout, had a lot of trash picked up, but to me, the significant thing happened right after, when I was talking to one of the volunteers, who I don't think has missed any of these, maybe one or two at the most, any of these volunteer projects picking up litter. And she said, you know, every week, we pick up this one section on Highway 90, and then when we come back the following month, it's littered again. She said, and that's real discouraging. And I said, you know, I agree with you, it is discouraging, but what would happen if we didn't do it? What would our streets and highways look like? And I said, you know, there's a couple of, there's an important thing that happens when we volunteer to make Silver City better than it already is, and that is, we make ourselves better than we already are, because we become an integral part of the community and we're contributing. So, next item on the agenda is number six, the approval of the minutes of the July 9, 2024 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councillor Prince.
I move to approve the minutes of a regular meeting of July 9, 2024.
Is there a second? Councillor Ben Como? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public input, and there is no public input this evening. Next item is number eight, reports. First item of reports is the VFW Post 12212 would like to present a plaque to the town of Silver City for its support of local veteran organizations. Will Mr. Brown, Mike Lewis, and Jacob Madrid please meet me at the podium? The plaque reads, "Presented to the town of Silver City for your continuous support to the veterans of foreign wars by the Gutierrez McBride Post 12212." And you would like to give us a few words?
No, I just, I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come, Mayor, to give this presentation to Mr. Brown, obviously, the town of Silver City for their continuous support. I know that the town probably doesn't get much recognition in all time, but this is a very special offering from us on your support that what you've done to us, very instrumental to our survival of being existing here in Grand County, and we do appreciate it being a unique place.
Just presenting the last item. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor.
No, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is nine public hearings, and there is none. Next, number 10, unfinished business, and there is none. Next is item 11, new business. Under new business, item 11A is the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2024-15, a resolution of the town of Silver City ratifying a certain agreement between the town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments dated July 23, 2024, and authorizing the executive of same by the proper official of the town of Silver City. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, as most of you know, we're required annually to approve the agreement to participate in the council of government organization. I think most of you have all had an opportunity to work with Priscilla and her staff, they are a huge help. The benefit we get for the few dollars that we pay to participate is, I would say, we're getting $100 to every dollar we give them at the very least. So it's my recommendation that we approve the agreement, and we have to appoint the representatives that will participate on the board. I've been the vice chair for a few years, so I recommend that myself be appointed to the COG Board, the Economic Development Board, with James Marshall, my alternate, and then the RTPO, the Regional Transportation Organization. Peter Peña is our representative on that, and we recommend that Jackie Olé be his alternate. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Councillor Prince.
I just wanted to say, I think it's closer to $1,000 for every dollar we're spending with these folks. What we get in technical assistance and the ability to administer our grants is incredible from the COG, and it's always wonderful to be able to catch up on state projects and see if the COG is at the forefront of it. Just wanted to speak one note, we've recently had to deal with a number of health concerns and folks potentially need to drop out. If there's any input that's available for succession planning and just making sure that we have alternates available, and forbid anybody gets hurt, but just want to make sure then that we do have appropriate leadership in place. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Councillor Conno.
I move to approve of Resolution 24-15, a resolution of the town of Silver City ratifying a certain agreement between the town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments dated July 23, 2024, and authorizing the executive of same by the proper officials of the town of Silver City, naming the first representative, Mr. Alex Brown, the alternate being James Marshall, and on the RTPO board, Peter Peña with Jackie Olé as the alternate.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councillor Prince?
I'll second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Councillor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councillor Prince.
Aye.
Councillor Snyder.
Aye.
Councillor Conno.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is business item 11B, the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2024-16, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council? You, any organization, municipality or county in New Mexico, has to amend their budget to actual, for uses. But what I've done for the entire time that I've been finance director is, I monitor the budget very closely, especially in the last, what, 10 years that Anita's been doing it. I haven't had to do it as much as I used to. So what we do is, as we receive grants, we go ahead and put them in the books and we expend them, but we don't always bring them back to the council every day. I try to keep you up on those agreements and those projects. As well as, for instance, we increased the revenues, the revenues and the general fund came in about $1.3 million above what we had projected last year. I usually try to always be conservative on my revenue projections, so this way, we're conservative on expenses as well. But throughout the years, as things come up, if the revenues are coming in above budgeted numbers, then I go ahead and use those revenues for needed expenditures. For example, we, throughout, last year, we, the council requested we increase patrols in the Boston Brewer Hill area, and we used ARPA money there, but we also used a general fund of money as well, and I was confident that we could do that, those projects, because the revenues were coming in well above what we had projected. So if you have any specific questions about any of the budget adjustment, please, I stand for questions.
Any questions, comments? Councillor Prince.
From the budget that we saw there for it, the diligence that you have for our budget is incredible. I remember when we were looking at this last year, I think we were looking at maybe 13.8 million, we had an upward revision on that, and now we're looking at 16.9, and our expenditures only came out to around about 14 million on it. So we do have some excess funding this year, and to be able to see that amount of growth is good. From the adjustments that we have here, we do know that overtime pay is one of the major ones that we've seen on this. Thirty-one pages of spreadsheets, it's not always the easiest thing to have to discuss, and a lot of it was a border meeting on it, but just, you know, as far as the story of our budget now, we are seeing some adjustments where we're spending, I think, another 1.4 million over what we had originally budgeted, and some of the largest items that I see on that is overtime. Do you feel comfortable speaking to any of the challenges that we've been hearing from both at the town hall meeting and just broadly in public about some of the issues we're having with staffing?
Well, the inability to maintain full staffing leads to the need for overtime. So, you know, that's been the biggest issue. So we do have the money for overtime, but at some point, those employees are going to burn out. And so we've got to work diligently to increase pay so we can be competitive. For instance, you know, like the police contract where we made the amendments so we could recruit laterals from other departments, that's beneficial, but of course, that keeps the costs, it's a lot more expensive to hire a lateral than a new, uncertified officer or barely certified officer. So, you know, it takes a lot on that side. And for example, in the actual budget that we'll see in a little bit, the only changes are negotiated raises and raises for the exempt employees, as well as the one thing that you hadn't seen from the preliminary budget that I talked about, I think last month, is I included a $2 an hour bump to the starting pay for all the utilities employees, because we're struggling to get any employees out there. Last month, we've got a couple, but we're competing against the mine from all the plumbers and stuff in town, and so it's very important, you know, we don't have water, we don't have sewer, we don't have sanitation, we don't have a tower, so there's no need for a police or fire. So, you know, we've got to start with that very basic services, so that, those are the only changes in that.
Any questions? Councillor Prince?
Just one more. With the money that we have that we're being able to, we're able to spend on salaries and on wages, I always just encourage folks to make sure that they're also thinking about what that money is being spent on. Most folks have had to see changes in their rent, most folks have had to see challenges of being able to borrow mortgages and afford their homes right now, and I would encourage city management as well as us when we get to go up to Santa Fe, when we have new creative programs then, to ensure that we provide housing for all of our public employees, that we're able to be able to help to allay the cost changes that we're seeing our employees have to spend on, that these are programs and projects that are worthy of time and attention. Hopefully, then, that money will stay in our community. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion? Councillor Ben Como?
I move to approve a Resolution 2024-16, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Conno?
I'll second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comment? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Councillor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councillor Prince.
Aye.
Councillor Snyder?
Aye.
Councillor Conno? Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is new business item 11C, the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2024-17, final quarter financial report ending June 30, 2024. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, this is the fourth quarter quarterly report. This is actually the final budget numbers for fiscal year 2024. I believe the total budget for last year was approximately 60, about $68 million. As you can see on the second page, we actually ended up around just over 40 million, spending $40 million. So some of the projects, like I've told you, CDBG, the Little Walla project, which we're going to hopefully approve today, all those projects take multiple years, and those funds are secured multiple years ahead of time, and so we get, start getting them ready like two years ago. So a lot of times, the approved budget is much bigger than the actual final budget, because the approved budget includes all of our planned projects that we've gotten ready. The final budget is actually what we actually spent over the course of the fiscal year.
Any questions or comments? Councillor Prince?
Just the only one that is still, just kind of sticks out to me is going to be emergency medical services. And I know that we've got a delegated system right now with the county for hospital, we don't have EMS, as far as I understand it. In our city department, we just have emergency medical transportation services. Just want to make sure that one of the major challenges we're seeing in our community has been access to healthcare services, especially emergency behavioral healthcare services. I know there's a lot of groups that are working on this, but just being able to make sure that the folks understand that there is a provision for us to be able to fund these things. I think we're looking at 67,000 and 80,000, we're spending a little less than 200,000 right now on emergency medical services in our community. So just as far as rooms and opportunities for us to pay attention to, hopefully be able to fund, just want to make sure then that those are ones that the city's paying attention to. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Councillor Conno?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution 2024-17, final quarter financial report ending June 30, 2024.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councillor Ben Como?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Councillor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councillor Prince.
Aye.
Councillor Snyder.
Aye.
Councillor Conno? Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Under new business item 11D is the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2024-18, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council? In front of you, you have the final budget that we would like to submit to DFA. As I discussed earlier, usually, these are all the planned and possible projects that we can accomplish over the next year. Like I said, last year's was approximately 68 million, this year, it's just under 71 million. I think we'll probably spend quite a bit more than 40 million, because we've got the rec center and a lot of the other road projects that we're going to be able to move on this year. So with that, again, and like I said, the only major changes from what I discussed last time was the $2 an hour increase for the utilities department, just basically increasing the starting pay in that department by $2. And now...
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any comments or questions from the council? Councillor Conno?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank Ms. Norero and her staff for the tremendous amount of work they put into this all year long, every year. I just spent a couple of days with a councillor from another community that was talking about how their budget hasn't been turned in in three years. I'm not sure how their municipality's even functioning, but I know that that's something we would never have to worry about, because you are so good at your job. So thank you very much.
I would second that, and we're going to miss her. She's going to stay another couple of years until home gone, so. She's gonna stay another couple of years until, till I'm gone, so.
Any other comments?
I have a question for Anita. How many grants do you oversee?
Oh, my gosh.
I know it's a lot, but I want the public to hear this.
I probably can't give you a number, but I know right now, just myself, I'm probably managing about, because of the rec center and things and the regional water project, I'm probably managing about fifteen million, and then my staff as well. They have smaller grants, but right now I'm, because of my staff shortage, I'm handling by myself about fifteen million.
Yeah, the, the total number of grants is approximately forty-eight.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Prince?
Just for, hopefully for the future, I know there's an immense amount of work at the thirty-one pages of spreadsheets and budgets. We're approving and reviewing last year's overall budget to spend on it. That's a meeting in and of itself for discussion. And now we're passing the preliminary budget at the same meeting, and we're already a few weeks into the financial year right now. I would just ask then if we can get appropriate time to be able to review our budget so that we can kind of go in, make sure that the community's needs are being addressed with the public funding. I would appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Bingomo? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Conno?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution twenty-two-four dash eighteen, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second. The motion is stated.
Any discussion, comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counselor Bingomo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eleven E, the approval/disapproval of bid number twenty-four slash twenty-five one, Little Walnut Road Phase Four. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, counsel, as we've discussed, the Little Walnut Road project has been in the works for a couple of years. This project is being funded with a Colonialist grant and a TPIF grant, so we've got a little over three million dollars. We, we, we put out to bid six bid lots. The, the larger ones that you see are at the actual roadwork. The smaller numbers are, are sidewalk. So we can cover roadwork and sidewalk for the first four bid lots. We will have some funds left over if this is approved, and, but we will be able to actually do change orders and spend all of the money that we've received. So we did receive two bids, the other from Southwest Concrete and Paving, but it's staff's recommendation to award bid lots one through four for a total of two million nine hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. That includes grocery receipts taxes.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Prince?
Just to read back on what we have here, the city is committing right now two hundred and twenty-three thousand eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents from our GRT, and then we're then going to see about two hundred, or two million seven hundred thousand right now that we're gonna see then coming from Colonialist to be able to fund this?
No, that, that two, two hundred and twenty-two, three thousand dollars is the grocery receipts taxes that we have to pay on the project. So we pay that whole two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to the state in New Mex, to the contractor who pays, pass it on to the, to the state. We receive a small portion of that back in our awards. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Conno?
I move to approve of bid number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash one, Little Walnut Road Phase Five, oh, excuse me, Phase Four, to be awarded to Deming Excavating Incorporated for a total of two million nine hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-two cents with New Mexico grocery receipts tax included.
Is there a second? Counselor Bingomo?
I'll second it.
Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counselor Bingomo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Just so you know, this Little Walnut project, Little Walnut Road project began quite a few years ago, right, Mr. Brown? How many years was that?
I think Phase One started in, I mean, was done in nineteen ninety-five.
And the purpose was to complete this project all the way from the city limits on Little Walnut Road, the end of the city limits, that would allow people a safe way to walk and bike. In addition to that, working with the county, the goal was to extend that project all the way out to the national forest. Many of you know and see the, the many hikers that come through Silver City and the bikers. And using that Little Walnut Road the way it used to be was really dangerous. There was no curve, you basically had to ride on the main road. And so I would encourage you to take a ride out Little Walnut Road and look at what the city has done so far, and look at what the county has done. It's a beautiful, beautiful road up to that point. So thank you, Mr. Brown, for all the work you've done on that Little Walnut Road. It's been a long, long road, so to speak. We had to get permission from people who live along to use their right of way, and we had to buy rights away and so on, but you made it happen. Thank you. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mayor.
Counselor Bingomo?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are hereby adjourned.